We're ready to start.
Good evening, the May 2 meeting of the Planning Commission is now in session. Can we please rise to say the Fledge of Allegiance? Kate, may we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Patty Crowen?
Here.
Doug Bryson?
Here.
Bruce Robinson?
Here.
Sean Keir?
Here.
Miles Lessinger?
Here.
Gary Cunningham is absent, and Steve Griffiths?
Here.
Thank you. Any agenda changes or revisions?
No.
All right. We have the minutes were sent to us of our last meeting on April 18th. There's our motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move to approve them.
If they're a second?
Aye, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Minutes have been approved. This is our public comment session, but there's no one in the audience, so we'll go on. No final orders tonight. No public hearings tonight. No whole business scheduled. And we do have some new business scheduled. We have a work session on domestic fowl. Richard, do you want to?
I'll do it from here, I don't have a PowerPoint. At their meeting on April 24th, the city council voted to refer some questions about domestic foul to the Planning Commission for review. And our ordinance defines domestic foul as adult female chickens. Specifically females, so there's no roosters. We don't allow roosters because of noise issues. This came up because of a complaint from a citizen about some chickens from a neighbor's property, and concerns about the fact that they were not restrained in any way. In other words, if the property was not fenced, the chickens were free to come onto this person's property. And about how close their coop could be to the person's house. They also raised the issue of odor from manure as well. In this particular case, the city manager and one of the city councillors went out to the property in question and didn't identify any significant problems, but thought that the issue was just worth visiting in any event. I've given you a memo in your packet that contains the relevant ordinance provisions, where we talk about you're allowed to have five chickens, five domestic fowl on a lot if you have an approved either outright use or conditional use on the property. You can have more than five, if you have more than 5,000 square feet, you get another chicken for every thousand square feet of lot area you have. So those of us in Rhodes End who have 6,000 square foot lots could have six chickens if we were subject to Lincoln City zoning ordinance, which we're not at this point. So there's nothing specific for Rhodes End about chickens. But in areas of the city that have a 7,500 square foot minimum lot size, they can have seven chickens. Not seven and a half, but seven chickens. There is no provision in the code requiring them, directly requiring chickens that you have to be contained in any way. We, let's see. There also is nothing direct about odor, but there is in the code, in the nuisance parts of the code, provisions dealing with odor. It prohibits people allowing accumulations of debris, rubbish, and manure specifically, and other refuse that aren't removed within a reasonable time, and that affect the health of the city. And also prohibiting premises which are in such a state or condition as to cause an offensive odor, or which are in a sanitary condition. Typically, that would be enforced by the code enforcement officer out of the police department, and it would be subject to complaints in general. In other words, he's not out looking for places that smell bad. It would have to be, someone would have to complain, and he could go out and see what the situation is, and decide whether there was a reason to address that. There also is a provision in the nuisance part of the ordinance that prohibits people from depositing upon property any kind of rubbish, trash, debris, refuse, or any substance that would mar the appearance, create a stench. We don't define stench, but it creates stench, or detract from the cleanliness or safety of the property and so on. So there are provisions in the nuisance parts of the code about odor. They are either Class B or Class C violations. Class B has a $1,000 per day fine, and with a presumptive fine of $260. And Class C has a maximum penalty of $500 with a presumptive fine of $160. There also are provisions in the code about separation of buildings. A chicken coop would be an accessory structure. It's not the main structure on a property, the house or the business, or whatever would be the main structure. Accessory structures are required to be at least 10 feet away from a house used for dwelling purposes, a building used for dwelling purposes, on the same lot. They also are required to be at least three feet away from the property line. So if you have a house that is, in most parts of the city, except for Rhodes End, we have setback requirements of five feet for a single-family dwelling, and seven and a half feet for more than one story. So five feet for a one-story, seven and a half feet for more than one story. There are, in the parts of the zoning ordinance relating to animals, there are requirements of, that, like if you have farm animals, we allow, they have to be a significant distance away, for example, with small animals, which is dogs and cats, pot-bellied pigs, pygmy goats, and so on. They, accessory structures housing them for four or more animals have to be at least 10 feet from any other lot in the residential zone, so they have a 10-foot setback, which is greater than the setback for residences. And farm animals have to be at least 50 feet from a lot in the residential zone. Farm animals are large animals, you think about horses and cattle and so on. And we do have a provision in the code about vermiculture, which is raising worms for baits and so on. And even they are required to be 10 feet away from budding properties. Again, we don't have a provision requiring any separation for chickens. So we have, we do have the provisions that say accessory structures have to be at least three feet from the property line. So conceivably, actually, we could have a situation where you could have a chicken coop that's eight feet away from a single-family house on an adjacent lot, but it has to be 10 feet away from a house on the same lot that it's on. So that's something that is, you may want to address. There also is a provision in the ordinances that, saying you're not allowed to have, not allowed to permit an animal to be at large. That would be, if it's just letting them run free, you're not supposed to do that. So there is a provision about animals running at large. It could be enforced by the code enforcement officer. But it, you certainly could suggest a provision relating specifically to domestic foul. The council has asked you to look at the provisions relating to containing chickens on the owner's property, and also to the required distance between chickens and adjacent dwellings. And you also may want to look at the odor questions as well, and see whether you think anything's warranted in that regard. And also, if you feel like anything in this ordinance about chickens is worth checking out, feel free to make that suggestion as well. I'm expecting that you'll have a discussion here, and then if you want, if you feel in need for some ordinance amendments, we can come back, draft an ordinance, and come back with something later. Let's see, Miles?
Does a property have to be fenced around the perimeter, or?
No.
The fowl could actually, is it just fucking going anywhere?
Right, they can go anywhere. Well, as a practical matter, it is possible for them to go anywhere. I know near here, there was a place, I'm not sure if they still have chickens there or not, but if you drove up the street, there could be chickens in the road. And that's, you know, it's not that uncommon for chickens to be wandering into somebody else's yard or something like that if they're not restrained. Restrained in the sense of, fencing restrains them to some extent, but they're birds, and it's possible that they can fly. So typically, people who want to keep their chickens for any length of time have a coop, not just for putting them in at night, for roosting at night, but something that contains them, protect them from your dogs, cats, coyotes, raccoons, and what have you. But there's no requirement for that.
Patty?
So coop is considered an accessory unit?
Right, accessory structure.
Is there a permit required to build an accessory unit such as that on your property?
No, if it's less than 10 feet high, or less than 200 square feet, there's no permit is required.
Okay. And I think I understand correctly, there is no city permit required to keep chickens in some other locales? You do have to actually go to the city and get a permit, and show how you're going to house them?
Right. Yeah, we don't have anything like that.
We don't do anything like that. Okay. So it's also then complaint-driven?
Yes.
Any other questions? Was this complaint taken to the code enforcement officer?
I don't know for sure whether it was taken to the code enforcement officer, but it was, like I said, the city manager and a member of the city council actually went out and took a look at the situation.
And they found no code of violations, correct?
Right. I don't know if they were aware of the animals at large provision in the code, but they didn't, my understanding is they didn't notice an odor, and the coop that was there was not located too close to the property line, or too close to the house on the same lot that it's on.
What, excuse me. What are we being asked to discuss here? Are we talking about a specific incident where a report was made, or are we talking about generically, are we going to overhaul the whole chicken coop ordinance?
Generically, basically, is, do you feel changes to the ordinance are warranted, so that would apply citywide henceforth?
My next question is for everybody on the Planning Commission, do we feel like we understand the current chicken ordinances well enough to overhaul them? As a population?
Not at the moment.
So that might warrant a lot more education on the current state of the ordinances, and how they relate to the complaints?
Well, I've actually read the ordinances that were provided to us.
Of course you have.
I have as well.
Silly me, but, I mean, I think that, in my opinion, having been a chicken owner, not right now, but previously, I think there are a couple of minor tweaks that could be made that make sense. I'm not so sure I would classify that a total overhaul of the ordinance, but I think there are a couple tweaks we could consider.
Sean?
Yeah, this animals at large, it says no person, no owner or person in charge of an animal shall permit the animal to be at large, period. That doesn't leave any room for chickens to be at large.
Right.
So if they have chickens, why do they not have a fenced yard?
Technically, if their chickens are...
It is required at large. Somewhere else, in other provisions, animals at large. It doesn't discriminate against chickens.
Right, if they're leaving the property, that's a violation now.
Okay.
The question is really whether you think there also should be something in the zoning code about whether they need to contain the chickens or not.
Well, it says they need to contain them.
At large.
Right, I know.
But so I don't, either we need to define this to exclude chickens, or they need to contain their chickens.
I'd like to throw in the dogs on Rhodes End beach into this, but we're talking about animals at large.
There is.
How do we distinguish between dogs on Rhodes End beach running up and down, which I love to watch them run? Believe me, I'm not about containing dogs and leashing dogs. But what's the difference between chickens running around in somebody's yard, and dogs running up and down on the beach?
In the part of the code in Chapter 6, there is, the 6.04 is about animals generally, and then I think 6.08 is about dogs specifically. And I don't recall exactly what it says, but under state law, on the beach, dogs are allowed to be off-leash. They have to be under the control of their owner, but they're allowed to be off-leash, except in state parks, which we have two in the city, one at Rhodes End. So it's immediately seaward of the Rhodes End wayside, and immediately seaward of the D River State Wayside.
And I think there's a city ordinance, because I read it, looked it up, that if you take your dog off your property, it has to be on leash, or it has to be caged in somewhere, like in your car, or in a crate. So there is a leash law on Lincoln City.
Right.
Yeah, well, and Rhodes End too. No dogs off-leash, and no fireworks, and no fires on the beach. Yeah, we've all seen the three signs.
There seems to be, my reading of this, if there's one tweak to make, it would be to make the setback consistent, 10 feet, because I think the accessory structures for somebody who's keeping dogs, you know, or breeding them or something, they have to be 10 feet from the property line, correct?
Doghouse?
If they have four or more, yes.
Four or more, and, so, I see what you're trying to do. So if you have two chickens, you wouldn't need to have that, yeah?
Well, that's, that's dogs, and cats, and pot-bellied pigs, and goats, rabbits.
Horses?
Not horses, horses have to be further away.
Farm animals.
Those are farm animals.
These are small animals, yeah.
Chickens are not farm animals.
We do require, as I said, a minimum of 10 feet for an accessory structure on the same lot as a house. They have to be 10 feet apart. You may want to consider changing it to be 10 feet from any structure used as a residence. They have to be at least 10 feet away. So it's consistent whether it's on your lot, or a neighbor's lot. Or something like that, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
But this is, you've only had one complaint about chickens, and this has been it?
That's all I know of, yeah. I can't say that no one has called the code enforcement officer about chickens. I just don't know, I don't have the information. I do believe that the city manager asked the chief of police, and he didn't recall any complaints. This was last week, so.
Where do you want to go from here? Do you want to...
Well, you know what I'd like, what I'd like to address is, we've got 60,000 people descending on our town in the eclipse. We've got a homeless problem that's really kind of enormous, workforce housing problems, all of these are land use issues. That's kind of what I'd like the Planning Commission to be talking about, instead of chickens. I don't see that we have one complaint. Ordinance has been around for how long? I don't really see we have a problem we need to solve, in my humble opinion.
Any other thoughts on this?
I'd agree with Bruce on it. We're looking at a problem that doesn't exist, and if it does exist, I think Richard and the staff would bring it to our attention again if there's outcry, but I don't see a problem. There's not only that, problems that you mentioned, but we've got economic development, which I think we should work on diligently.
Here, here.
Any more thoughts? Patty?
Richard, how long would it take you to put together a sentence or two to adjust the distance from buildings to include adjacent dwelling units, not just property?
It would not take long to draft something up. We would have, there would have to be an ordinance that would require findings of consistency with a comprehensive plan, statewide planning goals, and there would have to be notice mailed to everybody in the city. Typically, what we would do in this situation is where we have, we would have several different items that we would mail notice out, so we don't have to do notice for chickens, and notice for something else. We would do multiple notices at the same time.
That's expensive, isn't it?
Yes, it is, it's substantial. But we're going to be doing it soon anyway, on a couple of other matters. Something, some minor VRD-related matters, and a temporary uses ordinance as well.
So this complaint came to the city council, and the city council punted it to the Planning Commission to review the ordinance, correct?
Right.
And see if anything should be changed in it.
I'm just wondering why they didn't punt it to the code enforcement officer?
Well, I'm not, I don't question why they did. I mean, to me, the first thing you would do is look at the code and see if it's sufficient, see if it meets the needs, and see if it addresses the complaint that the woman had about the neighboring chickens. And if the at-large provision in the codes is what she needs to be doing, then we would be effectively punting it to the code enforcement people, right?
I think that's a really great point, but I think also, sitting here on this Planning Commission, we have brains the size of a planet. And I think the staff could probably figure out the ordinances. We ought to be addressing bigger issues.
So how are you feeling on this? It looks like we, if there's a consensus of all things, it's not to take any action on it. Am I correct?
No, I would, I would turn it back to the Planning Director and have him sync the ordinance, so we don't have the difference between an eight-foot setback and a 10-foot setback. And then when he gets around to issuing other items out to the general public, that that gets included, and then we can pick the ball up from there.
I agree with that.
Do you want to state that in a motion?
So moved.
Is there a...
Second.
May we have a roll call vote, Kate?
Robinson?
Yes.
Keir?
Yes.
Right.
I'm sorry, would you repeat what we're voting on?
Motion?
What is the motion that we're voting on, please, Kate?
Well, I made, in essence, I made a motion, Patty, to have some syncness between the language in the existing ordinance we have now, between eight-foot setbacks and 10-foot setbacks. To have those synced up together, and the director of planning to do that for us.
So that's a setback for adjacent properties, not just the center area?
That's, what I understand it to be, is that we have a provision requiring accessory structures, including chicken coops, to be 10 feet away from a dwelling unit on the same lot. The motion would be to also require it to be 10 feet away from a dwelling unit on another lot, on an adjacent lot.
That's, that's...
That's it?
Yes.
All right. I'm good.
I think that's what I seconded.
All right, Kate, can you call on her?
Sure. Okay. I'll start again. Robinson?
Yes.
Keir?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Lessinger?
Yes.
Crowen?
Yes.
And Griffiths?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and we'll continue with the Planning Commission training.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Communities are always interested in improving their streetscapes and their neighborhoods, both so that they function better, and so that they appear more attractive, and so that they retain and increase in value. So I'm going to show you some slides. I know the council has expressed an interest in trying to make Lincoln City look more attractive and inviting, both to people who live here and visitors. I'm going to share with you some photoshopped PowerPoint sets, and a few pictures from my vacation. I know. And actually, the PowerPoint sets are from, I purchased them eight years ago from Urban Advantage, and when I was in the Midwest, and because we were all so interested in trying to improve our community back there. But I noticed how much better photography is now, you know, even with my iPhone. So that's why I decided, this slide here is an alleyway in Columbia, South Carolina, where I was for an evening during my recent trip. And so, but we'll talk about that at the end. But I'm going to start out with these PowerPoint sets from Urban Advantage. I may have shown them to some of the planning commissioners before, but we have new commissioners, and I think discussion is always interesting to hear. So let's start. The first, and as we go through these, I would like to hear from you, you know, what appeals to you, what doesn't, what seems similar to Lincoln City, and, you know, lessons that maybe Lincoln City could learn from these places. And then when I get into, I want to say before the end of this, that when you travel, if you have photos that you would like to share, that you think illustrate an example of something that we need to know in Lincoln City, then, you know, I would welcome those, and maybe we could have an evening of sharing our vacation photos. Okay, so here's Peoria, Illinois. And this is a typical streetscape, where it's maybe not all that attractive. It does have sidewalks, so that's a positive thing, and a wide shoulder for bicycles, so I, you know, I, that's giving credit for that. But you can see what happens when you widen the sidewalks, you increase or put in bulbous, and in this case, they reconfigured the parking. Here's an example of, we do prohibit backing out onto a public street here in Lincoln City. But look at the difference between this use of space and this use of space. They all come out from here. Now, you couldn't back out onto the highway, I wouldn't recommend that, or even maybe some, you know, are minor arterials or collectors. But, you know, where we have local streets, is this necessary always? We do require a four-foot buffer of parking. We do require a four-foot buffer of parking around, or of landscaping around the parking now. But, you know, it's something to think about because they've been able to create more space by getting rid of that extra pavement of driving in and parking from the other side.
A few, a few other things in that is that the sidewalk in the first picture was out by the street and was separated from the buildings by parking. In the second picture, so it puts the pedestrians right up against the traffic. And also, I don't know if you noticed, the telephone poles were in the middle of the sidewalk. So ADA issue there potentially.
We have that in Lincoln City. Do you, do you recognize that from Lincoln City?
But then in the second picture, the, the parking actually buffers the people from the traffic. And also, obviously, there's street trees and just a more attractive environment there as well.
And on the side street, they have perpendicular parking. In the previous slide, they had parallel parking. So they didn't have as much parking, number one. And I'm not sure, you know, what the dimensions are, but apparently it works in this case. So then we, we take it a step further. Now we have this median and we've reduced the street, of course, from two, two lane, or from, well, I guess it was three lanes. So they've just basically filled in this with landscaping. And they've reduced this aisle. Whoops, I'm going the wrong way. We have clearly marked pedestrian crosswalks, which are nice. And this serves as, not only greens up the street, but it also serves as a refuge for people trying to get from one side.
I've seen some of those type of things, you know, in Lincoln City right now, haven't I? This third picture?
A median? You mean this, this kind of landscaping in the middle of a street, or?
Yeah, landscaping in an island like they have, may not have trees on it, but shorter landscaping.
Mm-hmm. And we have a couple other ones. We have the wave, we have, it's a concrete wave that people hit with their cars, I hear frequently. But we've made a couple other attempts to do something like this. And of course, a lot of this, you know, on the highway especially, anything would have to be approved by ODOT and they would analyze it in terms of the impact on traffic flow. So, so we are somewhat restricted in what we can do on the highway.
Couldn't we use some of that design for some of our, if we're going to do a second kind of road that parallels 101 through the neighborhoods, wouldn't it be nice for it to look like that?
Wouldn't that be nice, yes.
Because then we have the, the option to build it from the ground up and make it however wide we need it to be.
In the Nelskut Plan area, yes. And I, I believe they refer a couple of different places to boulevards. So, okay, next one. Here we are, in New Mexico. This is pretty grim-looking. And, you know, first thing they do is they fix up a building and make it attractive and inviting on the ground floor, and they add trees. And so this, in this landscape, we have lots of trees here in town. But, you know, trees do seem to add a lot to a landscape. Now, look at what they did to this, this parking lot here that just basically came right up to the street and looked like there was a large access here and just, you know, asphalt right to the curb. So putting some landscaping and a sidewalk in makes a huge difference. Then, you know, you still have this view of this parking lot or, you know, whatever it is. They've all of a sudden made it disappear. So a wall in this case is a really nice, I think, amenity. And then the neighborhood develops even further. And here you probably have, you may have mixed use or multifamily.
Well, these are existing communities that have done these, or this is?
They haven't done them. They, I mean, they may have done them, but I don't know that they have.
Nobody threw out the dollar amount to get from A to B.
Yeah, right, right. No, you know, it was, it was fun because in, when I showed these in Minnesota, somebody, finally, after I got to the last one, they said, "How long did it take for them to, you know, revitalize this area?" And I said, "Well, you know, I think about two hours on a Photoshop, you know, application," right? So, so it would be harder than that. But the idea that, you know, we do have commercial design standards. We want to take a look at them and see if they're working for us as well as they can and whether we should be tweaking them in some way, but standards-
Isn't that all budget-related? You gotta know how much it's going to cost, or if you're going to like to go with Plan C or Plan C or?
Well, sometimes it's, it's a public investment and sometimes it's a private investment. So as I was just mentioning, our commercial design standards, for instance, require when somebody builds a new building that they design it in a certain way to try to get at, you know, this close to the street, not having a parking lot in between the street and the building, having a building that is attractive, has a certain amount of detail. Some things are, you know, just a matter of, do you want your windows to be vertical as they are shown here? Or do you want horizontal windows and it makes a different effect? If all the, if all the properties develop in a similar way, then it provides a certain character to the neighborhood. Miles?
Have you taken any pictures of, of gray here on 101 and photoshopped them?
No, but that would be pretty interesting, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Maybe that's something we could do during our visioning process, Richard. I think that could be pretty interesting.
Yeah, it could be. See if we can afford to do it, so.
I don't think it's that expensive these days, you know?
Neither do I. You gotta have a few computer skills, so.
Right, right. And our consultants for our visioning did talk about visualization and trying to help people understand.
That would be a terrific sales approach.
Wouldn't it? That would be great.
Could be a community project.
Yes. Oh, you think we have the talent here in town and students?
Students?
Ah, yes.
I bet we have the talent at the high school.
That's a great idea.
And we'll have skateboard sidewalks.
You know, the, one of the activities that I have participated in in visioning processes is going out, everybody gets a camera. Now, everybody has a camera, right, with their phone almost, so no big deal. But people go out and take pictures of things they like and pictures of things they don't like. And then we talk about those and we see what our community sense is of what we want Lincoln City to look like or function like. So, okay, so I think this takes care of this one. Now, in this case, we have greenfield, you know, yet undeveloped property. And notice this, this road or path stays the same in all the photos. Here's one way to develop it. And the neighborhood has, you know, its focus is on this street. And then they have shielded themselves from this with this wall.
Looks like Vancouver, Washington.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, so here's another way. And in this case, it looks to me like there's more density back here, probably some multifamily or at least, you know, duplex, it's probably multifamily. Clustering the density here allows them to provide a green. And then all of a sudden, you know, the relationship between the neighborhood and the path, it incorporates the path as an amenity within the neighborhood. Okay. And now Kansas City, Missouri. This, this is already a developed neighborhood. And this is pretty simple, they're just spiffing it up a bit. They're planting trees, they're providing some enclosure for yards, but not blocking them off from the street.
Yeah, but one issue that's come up where I used to live in San Francisco, not many trees at all. And Friends of the Urban Forest encouraged homeowners or property owners to put trees in the sidewalk in front of their buildings. And a problem with that, when the tree grows, of course, are the root structures that start to disrupt the sidewalk.
Buckle up the sidewalk.
And ideally, you know, projects of this nature really need to find trees that are not, are going to minimize that impact. But that could be a long range, long, long range problem.
Portland had a lot of problems in the transit mall where they put trees in and they grew and it popped the bricks and dropped the sidewalk underneath that in the early seventies when that went, the transit mall went in.
Oh, really?
Some places I've heard of, they're, they only allow certain kinds of trees, so they're less likely to have that issue with roots. And also, some places, actually, when they get to the point where they may start to be a problem, they cut them down and put in new trees, smaller trees. So you never get big trees. You get, you know, you don't get the fifty or sixty or hundred-year-old trees. You're getting ten or twenty-year-old trees and then you start over.
This is very typical of the Midwest to have the street, the curb, and then what either is called a parkway or some people call it a boulevard, tree boulevard. But it might be, you know, even twenty feet in width. And one reason for towns in the Midwest to have this is so that they can store snow on it when they're shoveling the streets. But in, another reason is that you can use this area for driveways to incline or decline so that the sidewalk remains level and then the driveways can go up or down to meet the street. In our case, here in, in Lincoln City, our sidewalks typically are right to the back of the curb. And it saves, it saves space. But it doesn't allow us to adjust driveways to, so we end up with our sidewalks dipping down every time there's a driveway. So one bicyclist told me that she always rode on, instead of riding on the head-to-bay trail, she rode in the street because if she rode on the, on the head-to-bay trail, she'd spill her soup that she was taking for her lunch, going up and down these driveways. But, you know, clearly, we have a different situation here in Lincoln City, climate-wise. Trees are nice to look at here. They are not as critical for shade and cooling as they are in, you know, in the Midwest. But you don't know, you know, twenty or thirty years from now, that, that may become more important as well. Anything else about this one? Okay. Okay, here's an apartment building. And it seems that they have their sort of backyard private area on the street side of the building, and then they've enclosed it with this wall. We liked the wall in the other case, but in this case, and then they have an area between the buildings here. So look what happens when they take the, these additions and put them on the inside of the building. Then the activity's in here and their private, semi-private or semi-public area is inside the interior. And on the exterior, they have doors that face the street and sidewalks that meet the, or, I mean, walkways that meet the sidewalk. They get rid of the overhead power lines, did you see that? I wish it was that easy. Yeah. And then they, you know, they have new, new poles, new pedestrian scale lighting, and they've added some trees. And then they add what they call homeowner improvements, more landscaping in front of the houses. And we do have some landscaping requirements that apply to all, all properties in town, actually, single-family included. Anybody want to say anything about that?
That's a nice improvement.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, when you think that, you know, it started out to be like that.
It's terrible.
It totally rebuilt the building, it's perfect. Yeah, right. I guess the thing is, you know, how do you get them to build it right to start with? Or maybe, maybe the building did look like the later slide originally, then they added these things on and then they had to enclose it in order to have some privacy for their barbecue area or whatever they do out there in the backyards.
I think chances are, all they did here was just turn the building around. Seriously, that's, that's just the design. If you look at, you look at the building in the back, you see the, you see the back that was facing the street before and they moved the, the front to the front. It's just a, it's, it's whether you want to face, face in or face out, basically.
Ever, do we have any examples in Lincoln City where this is relevant? Specifically about undergrounding the power lines? It seems to me, I've heard some numbers like a block of power line undergrounding costs us $3 million.
Well, I do, we have had the experience of doing that on the highway in Ocean Lake and also in Taft. And, and we are talking about, the Urban Renewal Department is talking about doing undergrounding right in the vicinity of the D River wayside.
About like two million for four blocks?
It was very expensive, partly because they had to, they had to go under the D River. And they, and so it's, it's a very complicated thing. And it involved new street lights and intersection improvements at D River. So that's probably an extreme example. I don't know what it costs in a, in a residential area to put them underground once they're overhead. We do have in our ordinance a requirement that especially, that any new utilities are underground and for, for new construction.
Yeah.
And, but that applies basically to the private property. It doesn't necessarily apply to the big power lines that are running in front of the property. Although Goodwill, when they built their new building across the street, did put their power lines underground and made, made a really nice improvement.
That wasn't a city requirement, they chose to do that.
They chose to do that on their own, that's right.
So, but the substance of my question is, these, this imagineering is, it's good for the soul, but I'd like to see the same kind of imagineering with real examples in Lincoln City. What would it look like? And I think that might be a way to sell it to the City Council, whoever's going to buy it. What would that look like if you dumped the power lines and if you put up nice flowering cotton trees or something like that?
Sure.
I gather that that would be expensive to produce.
Well, we're not sure and we'll look into it because we are doing this visioning project this year and I think that visualizing-
Well, this visioning is really important.
Yes.
You know, it's very compelling to see that junky brick column in the sky turn into something very appealing. And what could that look like if we had specific, say, eyesores, specific Lincoln City issues? And how could we improve them?
Last night, the Budget Committee hearing, we were talking about the, in the proposed budget for planning, there's $50,000 for architectural services to help us review our existing design standards for, we have four different sets of commercial design standards. So we want to take a look at that, at those. If that survives through the whole budget process, then we will have some money to do some of this. And one of the things that the Budget Committee brought up was that they want to have, the City Council wants to have like workshop on what we want the city to look like from a design standpoint. So this kind of thing would fit right into that perfectly.
Is, is that separate from funding for the visioning process you're talking about?
Yes.
In addition to?
Right.
That's good news.
Great, yeah. Okay, let's do the next one. Here we are in California. Um, this looks sort of similar, doesn't it, um, to some of our streets? Uh, and they've got four lanes of traffic, it looks like. So now they, um, have again bumped out the curb so that it encloses each block of the street. Gives them an opportunity to do some planting. And, you know, in our case, if it isn't trees or maybe it's smaller trees, there are a lot of trees, um, you know, are, there aren't that many trees that are hardy enough to endure the wind and assault in our climate. But there are some and, um, there are many native plants that do very well here. So, you know, we have to, that's why, you know, our community's, um, unique. And, uh, we have to figure out what works in our community.
And those kinds of bump outs also provide a location for public art?
Uh, yes, they do. They also reduce the, a distance across the street so that just makes getting across the street safer.
And more, uh, do they change the parking pattern, uh, vertical parking at?
Hmm. Well, they don't show any parking on here and, and, you know, parking, I guess they do on this side. They do on this side and back on the road, street on this side. Having parking does provide a buffer to the people on the sidewalk. And it does, it has a calming influence because the wider the street is, um, especially when there's not a lot of traffic, um, people go faster. People go faster on the highway in the winter time and, than they do in the summertime, probably, partially because they can't go fast if it's really congested. But, um, it, it does have a better feel when people are going twenty miles an hour instead of pushing forty. So, uh, let's see, okay, we already talked about this and then, um, but again, here, you know.
Can you go back to the first one of this?
The very first.
Because there's a huge change in that building on the right from what looks like, uh, some sort of commercial building to what looks like becomes living space up top with commercial below.
Exactly, a mixed use. Mixed use situation, uh huh. Also, I was noticing again, you know, they're showing a situation where they are allowing, um, angle parking or perpendicular, it looks like angle parking to back out on the street. And that's something we don't do here. So, you know, it might be something to, uh, take a look at in certain applications, certain conditions.
Um, a number of years ago, the city of Davis did a study where they, because they had parallel parking on the streets. And they wanted to increase the amount of parking, which the, this angle parking does. But they were concerned about accidents and they, when they talked to the police, the police said they have more problems with people trying to park, parallel park than they do people backing out of that. And I don't know if that's just in that city or whatever, but it, in addition to providing you more space to park.
Right.
Some places also have the angle going the other way. So you don't back out, you back in. And, uh, so it's, so it's safer to leave the parking space.
Uh huh. And when you open your doors, um, your pathway then is back towards the sidewalk rather than towards the street. Keeps your kids corralled and so forth. There, you know, probably we have limited application here because, um, a lot of our right of ways are so narrow. Forty foot right of way is, is pretty standard. And, um, and then we have the highway, which, you know, we can't control without ODOT permission. So, anyway, but look what happens next. So, um, it looks like just, here we have just taller street trees. But then we add density. And so now we have three story where we started off with maybe one. And so, uh, you know, it just adds a lot of, um, activity on the street, enlivens things. It also supports then, um, businesses to serve the neighborhoods. And we've got more density, three and fours, now we've got four story buildings. And then in the back, you can see the residential towers. So it's just adding, um, more and more people to this neighborhood.
Were these, uh, are those real pictures or are they photoshopped?
The first one's real and the rest of them are photoshopped. The one that doesn't look too good is real. But if we went back here now, I don't know, maybe they've actually done something. So you would be inspired to do something if you saw this, I think. Okay, we have, ah, you know, when we were talking about the parks and recreation master plan, we talked about pocket parks, little plazas. Um, here's an example. So better, it has curved sidewalks, crosswalks, and then the lawn. Ah, they've got benches and, and trees. And of course, look at your neighborhood too. Now all of a sudden, you know, what if it developed like this instead of, uh, having houses tucked behind fences? Um, now they are part of the street and there's this, um, semi-public, semi-private space, um, on the front porches and in the narrow front yards. And more density. And kids playing and then, you know, they, you can have something that's more of a, a playground for a pocket park or a plaza. Or you can make it more of this type of plaza where you have a, a feature and, uh, more concrete. Um, you know, it's, it's a, a design choice and it depends on what the, how the neighborhood wants to use it. Anybody want to talk about that anymore?
Just think pocket, pocket parks are ideal for families with young children, you know? A great place to play and also for everybody, just in general.
Sure, you know, there's, there, um, if, if for instance, they had, um, I think Sandy Gruber has a, loves the idea of having chess boards that are, uh, tables that with embedded chess boards or, or checkerboards in it so that it just invites people to sit down and, and maybe play a game with a stranger or with their neighbor.
Particularly if that multi, um, family dwelling is a retirement home.
Sure, that'd be excellent.
Another thing about pocket parks is that they create community too, because people end up meeting there and interacting a lot more.
Yeah, and, and they encourage people not to get in their car to drive to a park. They can walk to it.
All right. Here's a dismal looking scene and one that's probably familiar to many of you. So what are we going to do with this? Anybody want to guess?
Take down the billboards.
Take the cars off the road.
Anything else? Look at the, what, look what happens when you put a substantial building at the corner. And our, um, our code requ, our commercial design standards basically, um, try to accomplish this. They want the buildings close to the street and they, they require that they be at least eighteen feet in height. This eighteen feet would probably be about right here. Uh, you know, so like a, a kiosk can accomplish that with a parapet around the top. But, um, multi-story and, uh, you know, density, uh, people generators. Uh, and then of course, next, we put bump outs and we put crosswalks, but still they're maintaining the wide street here. Street trees, pedestrian lighting, pedestrian scale, meaning it's, you know, these are probably, um, at highest, they're probably twenty feet instead of ones that arch way up over the street and are basically there to light the, uh, the, um, uh, street with as many, as few standards as, you know, light standards as possible. Okay, so now we have cafe seating and we have people. People really, you know, make a big difference in a streetscape. It's nice to see that people like to be there. Oh, well, well, look where we are, we're in Savannah, Georgia. And we're zooming to, um, to nineteen seven, or to two thousand seventeen. Savannah is a very interesting community on the, um, east coast. It is, um, laid out with, um, with, uh, these, um, blocks that are, that are, um, basically parks. And they're about half the size of a standard block. Uh, they all have different features, but they're, they're scattered all around the downtown of Savannah. Savannah's an old city. During the Civil War, I understand the soldiers left Savannah, uh, gave it up, um, because they didn't want it to, they didn't want fighting in there and bombing and destruction of the, of the beautiful city. So, um, so it was saved from, from a lot of destruction. Um, and so, you know, we still can enjoy this today. Whether you're inside the, the park or you're outside the park. And, uh, having beautiful landscaping and focal points, um, are really important in, in making the most out of our public spaces.
Also in those parks, besides all those benches, they have places to put your pet waste in every one of those parks on each corner. No, I was just there.
You just know that. Oh, were you in Savannah also?
Yeah, I was just there in the spring.
Great.
Your?
Great.
Yeah, they have, uh, so they just put, some city worker just comes by into the trash, put a little lime on, in there and it just eats that away and goes right into the ground.
Uh huh, uh huh. They're like little septic tanks for dog waste.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, and, and here, you know, this is a walled in yard, um, but you have this little peak into it, which is, which is nice.
Courtyards are wonderful.
Yeah, they, a lot of them, a lot of courtyards here. This is, I'm not sure if this is where we stayed or not, but we stayed in a similar place, uh, in a bed and breakfast. And it did have, um, interior courtyards. So that's, uh, where people, you know, could hang out and, and relax, um, in privacy. But yet it had this really nice street front. Older buildings and they were bed and breakfast, as I said, so it was a commercial activity. So, you know, it's, it's a mixed use, um, and maybe some of them are privately owned. And here I also wanted to illustrate that, uh, pedestrian walkways between buildings so that they can get to the back where the parking is. And, you know, that's always an issue, people want to park in front, you can have some parking here. You can also maybe have more parking in the back or you can get over to the next block. This is also in Savannah. I took this for the librarians downstairs because they had the idea of putting these around Lincoln City. But also, um, here's a little cafe and another mixed use area on a, on a relatively quiet street, uh, across from a park. And I think, um, that's just another park in the city. And this was in Columbia, this was my, um, beginning intro slide, but, um, this was in Columbia, South Carolina. Uh, we had dinner at a, a place, um, where, and I was looking around, it was out, it was beautiful weather and we were outside, which is nice. But, um, I was looking around this block and I noticed that, um, a couple of the buildings, some of the buildings looked really nice and the other ones were, um, clad in these, um, facade improvement from the nineteen fifties. And, um, so it was an area that was in transition. There were some really interesting new businesses there like the cafe and across the street was an ice cream company. And they had all these, um, unusual flavors of, of, you know, sorbets and ice creams. And, and I asked the guy who was running that store how long he'd been there. He said he'd been there five years. And I said, you must've been one of the first people on this block to, to open a new business. And he said he was the second one. He said the first couple of years was kind of difficult. I asked him, but, but, you know, things are really turning around now for him. I asked him if, um, it was a public, uh, uh, project or whether, you know, it was just all private. And he said, no, the city finally realized that they needed to have, uh, a main street. They needed to have a community center. And, uh, so they started making some improvements and I could, could have put in more, more, uh, slides showing, showing what they did downtown. But basically a lot of those things we just talked about, you know, bumping out the corners and, and planting, um, some landscaping. And they restored a fountain on the street. And, um, so, you know, it does work and it's nice to see in, in a location like this. So that's, um, that's Urban Advantage PowerPoints and, uh, uh, slide sets and my, some of my vacation photos. So, anyway, thank you for the discussion. I think it raised some interesting ideas and also, um, gave us some thoughts about how we can, um, illustrate ideas to people who are trying to vision, vision the future of Lincoln City.
Thank you, Deborah. Any further questions?
Did you schedule yet the, uh, visualization, uh, programs?
Actually, I believe the consultants are going to meet with staff, uh, next week and kind of kick off the project. We're going to talk about what we want to accomplish and how we're going to do that. Richard, do you have anything to add to that?
No, we're starting next week as, as Deb mentioned and there will be, uh, some very substantial, uh, public participation and, uh, workshops and.
Do you have to schedule anything?
Not yet. That's one of the first things we'll be doing that should come out of the meeting next week is how we're going to lay all this out.
I think one of the first things too is, um, the, the planning commission is the citizen involvement committee. I don't know if you're aware of that. But, um, the state in its planning laws back in the seventies required a citizen, um, well, the goal one is citizen involvement. And, um, so they specified that every community should have a citizen involvement committee that makes sure that the right people are at the table when we're having, um, discussions about our community and making decisions. Um, as our citizen involvement committee, I think it would be, uh, a good idea to, to discuss with you who, um, we want to have involved and, and, um, make sure that we don't miss anybody, any groups, um, or individuals. And maybe also give us some ideas on how you think we best can reach out to them. The consultants, uh, that we hired, uh, seem to have lots of great ideas. And, uh, so we're looking forward to working with them. But, um, it's also very important to have the local perspective and input on that.
Yep.
Yep.
Reports and comments, Richard?
Yesterday, uh, the city council in the afternoon had a workshop. We'll back up a minute. I know that you, among others, are very frustrated with the fact that we have not, you know, we're not immediately working right now on affordable housing in, in an obvious way, uh, and the same thing with economic development. There are a lot of things going on. The, the city council had a little workshop yesterday afternoon. It was to get to start on, uh, issues relating to affordable housing. They didn't get that far into affordable housing and will continue with that on the fifteenth of May at two thirty P M. Uh, and also, uh, that one is scheduled for economic development. And so presumably we will get into economic development in that one or may have to be carried over till the one on June fifth. But they're holding workshops, uh, on every other Monday afternoon for the foreseeable future. And it, and there's, they will be focusing in the, on, on the next couple of meetings on affordable housing and economic development. What I expect to come out of that is, uh, some marching orders, which, uh, will mean, uh, actually a, a lot of activity for the planning commission. You'd probably be looking in the not too distant future, be looking back on these, these few months this year as the good old days. As you may end up, uh, being overwhelmed with, uh, with, with other matters that we have to deal with. So, but, um, we will be coming, having a lot of, uh, uh, things coming out of, of those workshops. At the same time, we have, uh, the, uh, final drafts of the Buildable Lands Inventory Economic, Economic Opportunities Analysis and Housing Needs Assessment. And there's, uh, be a hearing here, uh, I think our first meeting in June. And, uh, you'd be reviewing that and making recommendations to the, uh, city council on that. And, uh, they contain, uh, it contains, uh, several pages of recommendations of things that we can do and, uh, policies that would be amendments to our existing comprehensive plan. But also there's a lot of things that can, that we can do without waiting for it to become part of the comprehensive plan. So a list of things to get going on. And so I think, I think you'll find those things very interesting. As far as the workshops, uh, there are public workshops, there are noticed meetings, um, you can attend. Um, we, it would be nice to avoid, uh, a quorum of, of planning commissioners there. But I, I think, I think you would find, find at least the results to be, to be very interesting. be very interesting, so, uh-
Yeah, I-
Things are happening, so-
I think three of us attended the, uh, workforce meeting here yesterday, I thought it was very interesting, and I was wondering, would it make any sense for the Planning Commission, for you to present sort of a truncated version of that presentation to us? I'm particularly interested in the property the city owns, and the suggestions the, um, urban renewal in the city are making for how that property could be used for workforce, workforce housing, or other types of housing.
Yeah, I think we could do that.
Is it too soon to do that, or could we maybe do that at our next meeting?
No, I think we could do that, um, the, uh, there were what, 21 properties, I think, that were discussed, and it was, it was, they can be gone through pretty quickly, I think, so, maybe we can do that at the next meeting.
Could, to that end, could you provide us in advance with the set of, the map sheets that outline those 21 properties?
Yeah, we could, we could do that.
You did, thank you.
This is a little bit off the wall, but it's kind of on the same topic, I was doing a little research, uh, on my history. I lived for a brief time, Jane and I lived for a brief time at the Tanisborne Reservoir in, um, Aloha Broome Field, somewhere up in that neighborhood. I, I would like you guys to at least take a picture of some screenshots, or go visit that property, I think it would be a very useful property for workforce housing. We went to work for, I went for, to work for Intel, um, and there was nowhere in that neighborhood in Portland where I could find a place to live. Tanisborne supplied very nice housing, really nice form factors, a great place to live for about 350 bucks a week. Um, and it's, it's probably gone up quite a bit since then, um, I loved the form factor, it was a wonderful place to live, it was right there on the reservoir, you could walk around and see ducks and that kind of thing, and Intel subsidized it. What I'm visualizing is the, for example, the 20 nurses who couldn't get a job at Samaritan, that anecdote, if they'd had a place in, um, for example, up in, near the Noah, up in our acquisition, where we had spot zones, some high-density, maybe eight plexes or something like that, for urban renewal, those places could have been available for Samaritan to subsidize the housing. So, I, I'd like you guys to go take a look at just that particular property, Tanisborne Reservoir.
Can you send us that?
On 185th, uh, quite near 20, Highway 26.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have that down?
Okay, good.
Um, report from the city attorney? No? Uh, anything more from the planning commissioners?
Did you just send them on a field trip to Portland? Well, I'll, I'll give you the Gaslight District in San Diego then, if you want to go check out another place.
And I've been in that neighborhood in Denver, you showed there, I, you, you could make a field trip there as well.
Is that why you left?
No, it was wonderful.
That looked like South Broadway to me, in Denver, but-
All right, um, I don't think we have any public comments on non-agenda items, um, so our next meeting is Tuesday, May 16th, and we also already have one agenda item for that, so, thank you all for coming to tonight's meeting, the meeting is adjourned.